Good.
Yeah.
All right, I will open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is seven o four P M. Now, please note that all members are present here in Town Hall. Now, please also note that this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of public or applicants can participate either here at Town Hall or remotely through the Zoom link. But please note, this meeting is being recorded. Um, we'll skip item one and go to item two. And we'll reopen the public hearing for fourteen to sixteen Hillside Street. This is a continuation from April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you, Mister. Chanowski, did I get that correct? Chanowski?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chanowski, for joining us tonight. Uh, Bill, would you mind just filling us in on what happened last meeting until this meeting? And then we'll turn it over to Mister Chanowski.
Uh, the planning board opened this hearing and uh, went through the applicant's proposal and a presentation, which he's got an updated presentation he's gonna give you tonight. There were a number of issues that the board had requested clarification or additional information research on. We have the garbage, uh, the recycling, the number of units and parking concerns. And so the applicant has presented a package, which I believe we've sent to the board um, last week. And um, at this point, we're, I think, ready to reach further, looking at a a special permit for multifamily requesting four units.
Thank you. Um, I understand you have a presentation.
Yeah.
Just.
Definitely.
And Bill, can you just ensure that we're sharing the screens too?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Comfortable back, you good?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Um. Well, sorry, and you can you identify yourself with the record, please? Yeah, yeah, Justin Chanowski, um, with the property pursuit of happiness LLC. Uh, proposed project, uh, the existing building side by side, uh, duplex located in the D O D. Um, existing layouts are two bedroom units with finished basements. Proposed layouts are two, three bedroom units on the first and second levels, and then two one bedroom units on the lower level. Uh, and then it's a complete renovation interior exterior, uh, including uh, the roof siding. All right, so this just highlights my takeaways from our last meeting, um, and hopefully addresses the concerns. But um, on the parking side, uh, there are concerns around the logistics of the parking that was presented uh, last time. There's also concerns um, of access to the lower levels by emergency personnel, um, while cars were parked in the provided parking areas. Uh, there's concerns around waste bin staging and logistics to bring to the streets, uh, drainage of the gutters that don't exist today. And then um, proposed plantings at the front of the property. So. And I'm just gonna run through the highlights and then we'll go through the planner, I can bump them out. So um. Kind of the changes since the last meeting is we've uh, proposed adding a purview parking area for six cars at the rear of the property um, to alleviate the entire parking issue uh, from the front of the property or or the existing sides. Um, we've added stair access from the existing driveways on both sides to allow uh, emergency personnel um, and unit occupants to access those lower units um, in a more cohesive way. Uh, we've added a deck to the to the rear of the building with stairs to access that parking area for the upper units. Um, we're repurposing the existing parking on the fourteenth Hillside side uh, to stage waste and recycling bins uh, so they'd have direct access to the street. Um, and then on the rainwater management side, there's really no major changes to the existing infrastructure. So the rear gutters capture fifty percent of the roof, uh, will go into the pervious surfaces on the rear of the house. Um, the front gutters do not exist today, so we are gonna be adding them and diverting them away from the street to make a minimal impact. Um, you know, full uh, logistics of exactly how those are gonna work uh, will be worked out kind of in field to make sure that they're away from the building. Um, to my knowledge, there's no existing problems with water coming from this particular property onto the street causing issues for the town or the neighbors. Um. So um. We're gonna do our best to not add any issue, but um, certainly I don't believe that there's any issue um, today. So as you can see in this proposed site plan, um, we've taken this existing drive space and rather than using it for tandem parking, um, it'll be an accessway to six parking spots in the rear of the um, rear of the lot. It's gonna be pervious surface, um, so there's no issues of, you know, um, rain being collected on the surface and causing any issues in the river basin. Um. You're gonna have two access points here uh, from each side to access the lower units. Um, and then um, staging here for ace eight wastelands and possibly a new fence here. Um, you know, we'll work out with that neighbor whether that would that new fence would be a hindrance or, you know, a benefit for them um, in terms of having our waste bin um, there. Uh, these front areas uh, where we propose plantings, um, we're gonna propose putting in some planters that can be seasonally um, changed to provide uh, a little bit of, you know, change on the street through the seasons. Um, and obviously that'll, you know, entail us uh, maintaining those those planters and um, being a good uh, neighbor here um, in the the O D district. And so just looking at um, egress or or access paths, um, you have two access paths to the front um, street through the upper units and then uh, a proposed access path to the back um, parking um, through this deck. Um, that would be accessible by both units. And then for the lower units, you'd have egress through these stairs, uh, walkways, um, directly out to um, the front street or they could access the um, the parking area as well. And then just updated floor plans, obviously showing the deck with the stairs uh, for the units one and two. Nothing's changed about the second floor plan. And then on the lower floor plan, units three and four underneath the deck, um, as you recall, there was a storage space here. Uh, we're gonna relocate that storage space because we have to build a deck anyways. And so relocate that storage space, which will allow us to have the access on the side um, down to the back um, to those units and to the back parking. And then just to highlight, you know, this is the existing state. And then the proposed elevation on the front doesn't change, um, although these cars here would no longer be, you know, permanent fixtures on the street because uh, this side would be again, taking this piece down um, and having a waste bin storage there, and then this would be the um, access drive for that rear parking. So that's the extent of the updates. Um, I don't wanna go through the whole presentation again unless there's some specific points you all uh, would like to go over.
Okay, thank you. Um. My. My current impression is that from a few weeks ago, the first meeting we had, that it was clearly that there's gonna be challenges with one of those special permit criteria which is traffic, parking, logistics, things of that. Um. It's potential that that has been alleviated, but it's I'm balancing that with another special permit criteria, which is the characteristic of neighborhood. And I struggle to understand how the characteristic of neighborhood not being impacted by having a parking lot in the back of the house in this neighborhood. Um, I I don't believe that's the case for other properties. So this would be a definitely a change in condition of the characteristic of the neighborhood, which is one of the special permit criteria. I'm posing that to you now upfront, so you understand where I sit at this moment. Um, I need to understand how, if there's a way to not have that same impact to the characteristic of neighborhood while also making sure that we don't have the same traffic issue that we presented last time.
The two, one property over, there is a large parking, uh, paved parking area uh, that's seen from the street. Uh, so it is, you know, although this may be new for this particular site, um, it is an existing condition on the street as part of the neighborhood at a much larger scale than six parking cars. I think there's probably a hundred or a hundred and fifty spots over there.
Okay, um, so that was my initial comment. I'm gonna turn it over to board members for their um, for their questions at this time.
Wait, which is the property with a hundred and fifty?
Uh, there's the parking lot for the
The mill?
The mills, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And that's one house over.
Yes. I think more of the concern is probably like comparatively to the residential neighbors, just that it's that it's different.
Any questions from the board? What's being presented?
I got a lot, but you don't have to start.
I think he wants you to go first. You know?
All right, go ahead. So a parking lot of this size is required to meet certain design parameters and elements. So can you walk us through that? It doesn't seem like it's compatible to go design requirements.
So as um, I read through the designer's fire. These proposed parking spots are nine feet wide by eighteen feet um, with another eighteen feet uh, for rear clearance for uh, backing out of the spot, spots. Um, so my understanding, as I read through, that does meet the time requirements um, for parking.
Um, for parking space dimension, I'll give you that, you know, I don't know, but what I was really focused on is setbacks from property lines and screening of property. So there's at least a minimum setback of ten feet and then our screening requirements.
Okay.
So how can we use that?
So uh, we do have the space on both sides to move this over and provide that that ten foot buffer. Um, and if we needed to provide fencing for any screening, you know, that's certainly.
Why show me the map on ten foot buffer?
The what?
Show me the map on the ten foot buffer, because I don't think you got it. You have six faces, right? Nine feet?
Yeah.
That's fifty-four.
And we have sixty-two.
Okay, how do you get ten feet on each side?
We're probably short on that.
Yeah.
So we can alter the the parking um, or flip the direction of two spots. Um, if that was necessary.
Um, so Bill, what um, um, Bill was getting at is that um, for us to uh, consider even approval, we just need to see these things laid out and with real math on all sides um, to show that it's compliant. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, you can ask the waivers, but you have to be specific as to what waivers you want.
Yes.
So. You have to see something that mentions a thing. Um. The other issue, well, an issue with the parking lot is maybe the people get putting up hard to their apartment by his person.
In this space?
Yeah.
Um, well, just as part of the design, we would provide a walkway. We just haven't determined what style walkway that would be. I mean, it's a, it's a backyard, I mean. I walked through part of my backyard to get into my house. Obviously, we'd have to provide safe patches for them. So whether that's a continuation of this pervious surface or, you know, paved walkway or what? Um, you know, we still have to determine that in the overall aesthetics of of the plan.
Okay, so that's an example of another detail that we're required to look at is the calculated block coverage and things like that. So if there is gonna be walkways and things, because of the special permit request, we need something that answers.
Yeah. I believe in this district, we're able, I mean, the law coverage for a building is ninety percent.
I'm in a town meeting, I'll come back in a little bit.
So.
Well, and the other issue here is approximately to the river because it's, it's, you know, well within the river buffer too. Um. Well, actually, it's a big, like a cause now as well, right?
Yes, that would have your response.
Yeah, so I mean, that just rolls into the criteria for the D O D special, not the overall special permit, which is you know, you're protecting the river and and the other elements are enhancing the pedestrian environment and then compatibility with the neighborhood. And I'm not seeing any of that. It's the opposite of protecting the river. There's no pedestrian enhancement for the D O D. So can you talk to how you think you're meeting the D O D special permit criteria?
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, I think we were, we went over this last meeting. The last meeting, we did discuss that if the parking area was a pervious surface, um, it was on the record that we wouldn't have to go to Comcom for that.
When we can't speak for Comcom, um, I don't know exactly what's said last meeting, but we cannot speak for the Conservation Commission.
Well, I, I mean, I, I
Design of a pervious surface either, so. You know, nobody could make that call without seeing what the pervious surface design actually did.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, I would have gone to the Comcom between now and then, had I understood that that was, that was gonna be a requirement. Because last time, you know, we, it was clear that they, that you guys, uh, someone here had said if it was gonna be a pavement surface, we'd definitely have to go to Comcom. And I said, well, if it was pervious, would we? And the response was no, so.
I don't recall what discussion happened. We can't speak for Conservation Commission.
Right.
My question didn't happen in that fashion. Regardless, uh, Conservation Commission needs to speak for themselves, and they would need to see formal submittals or um, any type of any, any type of activity within a buck or some, let's stay long. Um, I think what Bill Crenshaw was referring to about pedestrian experiences is about more of the, more tied towards the sidewalk and um, access to the downtown, dealing with the downtown Overly District area and things of that nature, right?
I'm just trying to find how any part of this meets the D O D special permit criteria because it has a list of things that at least one of them has to be met. Yep. And I'm not seeing any of it.
So uh, I mean, I can go through what I presented last meeting on that, if that's helpful to review. Um, I mean, let's recall, this is the current pedestrian viewpoint when we're going down by this property. Um. This is the proposed pedestrian viewpoint. So I think just from the aesthetic upgrades of that, that's improving the pedestrian experience in the D O D.
I believe the criteria uses the word substantial.
I mean, uh. With all due respect, I, I think that's, I don't know, this is subjective. I don't know what substantial. Like, if, if, what's the criteria to determine what's substantial and what's not? Uh, to me, that's a substantial upgrade into a street. Um, but if it's not, I'd like to understand what would be considered substantial, so I can speak to that.
I think that, I mean, yes, the cosmetic changes are clearly nice, but I think it's the, the pedestrian experience that we're talking about isn't necessarily walking by and looking at what's there. It's what's happening with the sidewalk. Um, I know that's town property, but in the D O D, it's not uncommon for, you know, the actual pedestrian walking experience to be improved or at least addressed in some way. Um. So it does look very nice, but um, I think that that's.
Yeah, so ways have been addressed by other applicants have been on with sidewalk improvements, ADA compliance, lighting, um, things of that nature.
So uh, landscaping as well.
Landscaping.
I mean, currently on the fourteen side, um, I do believe that the drive meets ADA with what's existing, uh, what has been completed by the town. On this side, uh, like I mentioned, uh, in last town meeting, that catch basin um, is is lower by sixteen inches from the sidewalk uh, in the street. So in order to address ADA compliance there, um, a substantial change to the street would have to occur, uh, which I I'm not sure that I can, you know, shoulder that um, as part of this project.
But Mister Chair?
Yes.
If you wish, I, I, I've got the conservation, I can um, give you a clarification on that. If we, if it's, or whatever the board wants.
Yeah, we sold off on that.
Okay.
Continue for board comments.
Right.
Um. Two other comments, um, one involved the parking lot, what's the plan for flower? How do you? You can't push it closer to the river.
Or snow removal, we'll call.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so in this, obviously, I agree that it can't be pushed forward into the river, uh, because we don't wanna even have a visible inkling of somebody thinking that there's an impact. So we would have to have a snow removal plan of moving all the snow into that area. Obviously, you know, making sure that the path is maintained, which would be our, our duty as a landlord. To make sure there's a safe path or passage for the occupants to get to their units.
Okay, and then, um. There's a cloud coming as well as the uh, the waste bin area.
Mm-hmm.
What, what kind of screening are you proposing?
Uh, so up here, it would be a a six foot fence. Um. In that area, um, to screen it from, from the neighbor. Um, but again, you know, um. I haven't had any interactions with that neighbor, so, you know, if they were not wanting that fence, I would, you know, wanna have their input on it, I guess.
Are you referring to where it says new fence?
Yeah.
If you're playing a string here from the street.
Uh, I mean, we can put a, a length of fence here. Um, again, this is gonna be an act, we, we've added and we've taken down part of the, the building to allow access um, to the, that, to the exterior unit. So if we completely shielded it from the street, it was impede on that access that we provided for emergency personnel, the tenants, um, and other aspects that were brought up at last meeting.
Other questions, comments?
I guess I just. Okay, it's my, it seems like you have addressed, I mean, uh, the fire chiefs concern were, as you said, access and things like that. And I do like that the, the whole right side of the building has now been made more accessible, which I think is important. I guess it's just like the parking lot, I mean, it's a good solution, um, in that, you know, it has space for everyone. Um. I do wonder about the turning radiuses of some of those cars in terms of like, you know, if they're actually able, if the parking lot is full like that, how do they actually turn to get back, um, to get, to get out again? I just, I feel like inherently, there's a difference between the mill and main parking lot, which I believe, I, believe me, the fact that we have a, a thou- thousands of mill and main parking lots all over this town that are not being used is like an overall problem, but there, it feels different to have a residential, you know, parking lot in the backyard. Um. In a series of property that, you know, are used for recreation, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just propose that other neighbors have significant amount of cars on their properties as well. Um, and so whether it's, you know, the, the amount of spots required, you know, for this or whether people park on their property with, you know, multiple cars, you know, it is existent in this area. Um, I did go by last night and take a picture of the street at seven fifty P M., which, you know, was a concern that there's not enough parking on the street, and it's quite empty. So, you know, to, that was other comments of, you know, that there's not enough street parking and all of that, you know? It clearly is, has plenty of street parking, especially on the far end by the mill and main parking area, um, that could support this. Um. And then I guess, you know, one other proposed, if we made this bottom a single unit instead of two, we would only be required to have four and a half parking spots. Um, so, you know, if we took, say, four, right? You know, that would make sure that we meet any dimensional requirements, uh, make a much smaller parking area. And whether you have four cars in the back or, you know, three cars here, which is, you know, the neighbor has three cars parked here currently, uh, and a car here, you know, I think that's um. You know, this provides a better experience for the neighbor and for my property by not jamming six cars in this area that no one can really access their cars. Um, and then same thing here, you know, it's a tight to get a car in there, I mean, what people are doing, but um, you know, that would be a proposed improvement, I think, for, for both neighbors on that standpoint.
Yeah, I do agree that I've, I've been driving by and having the car that, the, the car that would be parking there would spill out onto the sidewalk, I'm pretty sure, unless it was a very, very small car.
Yeah.
Um. Okay.
Are you showing six spaces because that's required? Or could this work with four spaces and four units?
So uh, as of last meeting, um, there was concern that I didn't provide the six parking spots in a way that um, logistically would make sense. And so, you know, I wanna propose what's required. You know, certainly if there was an ability to provide four for the four and it, you know, met all the requirements and the board was okay with that, um, that would be fine in my, um, in my view as well.
I'm noticing also that there's a, a retaining wall here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's the type of detail we're gonna need to see from, um, basically the design engineer, understand what that retained wall is, what's the aesthetics of it, what's the safety on it. Um, do you have a sense of how high that retaining wall would need to be?
Well, this is existing.
Oh, that's
That's not proposed. Yeah, that's existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the slope of the driveway? You know, approximately?
I don't know.
I mean, the slope of the, you know, I know it's not a drive.
So there's an existing retaining wall, you're closing a driveway directly adjacent to it, is it?
There's an existing driveway there.
Is the driveway lower than the retaining wall?
Uh, by about twelve inches.
Okay.
Plus or minus, right now, the, part of the driveway's been washed away by the storm and a lot are coming up the street. Um. So in that area, it's about two feet, but um, overall, it's about twelve inches.
Other questions, comments from the board?
What we need for the landscape and review requirement and the, um, standard of this.
Design.
Design requirement.
Um, so we have landscape regulations, um, and for the, and for this project, um, we would either require a landscape plan um, or um, a, the, the description with called out feature um, types of plantings, locations of plantings, things of that nature that then gets reviewed as well. Um, usually, usually we, I try to get through all of the other logistics because it seems usually landscaping is um, easy to figure out later on. Um. But yes, to answer the question, it's, we need to, at minimum, I, Bill, in the past, we had requested to at least see the uh, locations and types of plantings.
Yeah, that was
imposed and what their starting condition is and what their sort of final condition is, for example, arborvitae, right? You know, we, if they're used for screening, we need, we just like to understand what the height will be, what the current, you know, what the planting height can start at.
Yeah. And, and based off of last meeting, uh, we determined that seasonal planters in the front, rather than permanent plantings would provide a more manageable solution to avoid any concerns of, you know, a plant being planted that would get out of control. Um, and then the rear of the property would just be maintaining the grass that exists today. So there's no proposed plantings, um, right now.
Are there trees and? Are there trees and bushes impacting?
No.
Like, I think that there's some trees, but they're probably further down.
There's further back towards the river there in the buffer zone that we gave. Between the end of our property line, which is not the river. Um, there's, there's another, I think, ten or twelve feet to the river from our property line.
Is that not your property, or is that a?
It's not. It's not our property, it's, uh, owned by the mill.
Okay.
From my understanding, I think we could do that.
Now, did you have a chance to peruse, I I did send you the landscaping. Regulation, do you have a chance to peruse them?
Uh, briefly, um.
And I think that's what the board's talking about, there's a general, it's not that it necessarily, um. That there were specifics. For exact plantings and so on, but how, what the kind of what they're looking for in this, the the spirit of what they're looking for, um, I think that kind of lays it. Uh, uh, it it gives you a pretty good idea what they would expect for that. Um, so far as what's required, the board has flexibility to. You know, make, uh, an alternative landscape plan or other cases, but it it should be a a draft.
And if there's no proposed plantings, then.
Well, th- there's a.
I mean, is there a requirement that I add plantings?
Yeah, depending on, there's a, um. It it's, there's not, like I said, there's not a specific, it doesn't say you have to have ten trees here, or whatever the case. May be, but there's supposed to be a, um. An outline of what you're proposing. For the plan that is consistent with kind of where the boards was going with their landscape. Uh, regulations, which kind of gives you a blueprint of what they're trying to create with any new development or special permits, so for example. You know, like I said, does it tell you? A box would needs to be here or something like this, but it does say, you know, it dresses everything from snow storage to. To types of of plants that they're looking for, the irrigation systems, the lighting and things like that, I think it's a valuable tool. And and, um, it's. Kind of meant to bury you for the sort of that.
Okay. We can review that.
Speaking of lighting, will there be any lighting for the parking lot?
Um. With the review that I completed, we would have some lighting on the building that would. That would be able to light, uh, um, the parking area.
Bill, numbers are up. Fully familiar with their. Lighting requirements. Do you have a, do you know off the top of your head, is lighting of the parking lot is required?
I don't believe it's required on private property, no. I think that the 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 the, what we talk about is that the, um. Dark Sky Compliance and this sort of thing, and particularly where you're dealing with a parking area like that, it would be something that we would. Um, we would, if there was lighting proposed or wherever. The board would probably wanna see some sort of photometric or something to ensure that the lighting isn't gonna spill on any, uh, adjacent properties or. With the case of the river, I would think that there would probably be, um. Something you wanna look at as well, so it's pretty much standard stuff when you do lighting, I don't even know if you're gonna do it back there, but. Whatever, that was just a. Again, that's in the the the.
Yeah.
Two regulations, so the planning board regulations and the landscape regulations are on that sheet.
Yeah, I mean, we would have, uh, obviously, lighting for these walkways.
Yeah.
The deck. Um, you know, I think with most residential, that that is enough to spill over into.
Um, I'm not suggesting that I am asking in any way for lighting of, uh, parking lot.
Just if there is, that that's part of our thing is that we.
Do you have any other questions from the board, comments? Um, uh, again, uh, as I stated at the beginning, I'm I'm still struggling to see how. Uh, this is not, um. I see, I I don't, I do not see this as an improvement to the characteristic neighborhood, I think it might. Having a parking lot of six cars in the back to me signals that it's. Uh, it's not in the characteristic of the neighborhood itself, and I, I'm still struggling to understand how, if we can meet that criteria.
Just a quick question, are we talking about the D O D neighborhood or the adjacent? Single family neighborhood, because those are two different neighborhood types.
Um, so I'm looking specifically at this neighborhood. And it would be, um, this is part of the criteria for for ten point four, the special permit criteria. The downtown overly district criteria nine point four. Um, has other considerations as well, um, Phil. Should we take a minute just to walk through those?
Sure. For the downtown overlay or just in in general, let's start with ten point four.
Yeah, I mean, I I presented through the last meeting and I didn't. Have any questions on them. Uh, the questions were all directed towards, um, the parking concerns, um.
I don't think it fully covered the D O D discussion.
I had the D O D if if you want to after, but.
I mean, I'd be open for comments on what I presented, because. Um, again, I'm I'm taking the feedback from this meeting and trying to address it as best as I can.
Be clear. Bullet number two, which is, I believe, our special permit criteria two for ten point four. Traffic flow safety, including parking and loading, that was part of the discussion lacking. Right, and so I. If, do you have the next couple bullet points of special permit criteria? So there's those three, and then there's neighborhood character and social structure, so for me to have a parking lot in the back of a residential property in this neighborhood, I'm. Not sure that it meets this criteria for neighborhood character.
This is.
Four, this is ten point four special permit, which it needs to meet all criteria. Whereas the D O D special permit for nine point four, it just needs to meet one or some.
Well, it needs to meet several, and then one of which it needs to meet has. Subsets of.
Right, has to meet one, it's a little more complicated, but.
So I just don't, I think. This presentation mostly was focused on the ten point four criteria and then fully. Address the D O D.
I guess I would just ask if there's. Guidance that could be provided from the town, because, you know, the overarching concern was having enough parking on site. Um, based on public comment and and the board comments, um, and so by addressing that now. We've gone a step back and negatively impacted the project, and so. I just, I just wonder if there's a way to do some kind of extensive review, because if I come up here every other month to. Try to alter this to fit in, but we're. Hitting one comment, but striking something that wasn't even a comment, maybe necessarily last time. Right, we couldn't be at this for six or seven months, where I think it feels like. A collaborative sit down session of some sort with, I'm not sure who within town would probably alleviate. Um, a lot of this and maybe get us to a a conclusion.
Well, town town staff would be happy to. Sit down and walk through anything that's been provided, um, I will carve out time for myself to also be present to walk through those items as well. Um, my, I take it upon myself to help all applicants, including yourself, to find a path towards success. And that's what I consider my job.
Yeah, again, like, we don't, we're not wanting to do something that's. You know, we do want to improve this property and and do it in a way that's obviously, um. Feasible for us, I know we can only do so much to a property without there being.
And and I appreciate all of that.
Thanks, we do allow offsite parking, so. Here, for example, we were leaving space on the mill in that lot. That would probably meet our criteria.
Yeah, I I would just question the fact that that leasing. Um. Peace would probably offset a good portion of the additional income. From the property, um, and so, you know, then we're looking at, rather than having three bedroom units, we have five bedroom, two five bedroom units, which. Would obviously raise the the income of the property, not to the level to do all the work that we're doing, but. You know, if we're talking about a hundred bucks a month for a parking spot, it's, you know, quickly eroding. Uh, any viability to.
From the, Mr. French, I was just, yeah, giving an op- another option that's been explored previously. Um, other comments from the board?
I mean, or the other option is. So I know that street parking is a concern. I guess. I don't know, I I'm more. Asking for a waiver for fewer parking spaces is also an option.
Yeah.
I appreciate the parking lot. Idea, because it does keep it on your property.
Yeah.
Um, but it, as I, it does bring up, you know, the other concerns too, I don't wanna, you know. Be chasing it in circles, but it's just sort of.
I don't, I mean, is it? Would it be viable to pro- provide options A, B, C, and D, and and then have you guys vote as a board, which one would? Allow this proposal to move forward or?
Um, sorry, tho- those types of things are very challenging from open meeting law perspectives, um, I, the best ways, I think, to have. To take this offline, um, stat, stat. You know, um, can give you many examples of of what's been successful previously, I'm happy to help as well. Um, and I think that's the best way to be collaborative, right?
Yeah.
You know, um, we're not allowed to, you know. Have three different types of applications and then take votes, it's just, we have, we we have an application in front of us. Um, tha- that's the structure of the whole, um, meeting and, um, and the whole special permit and hearing, um, procedure. Um, and that's what we need to abide by.
I th- I think the takeaways, uh, are are, a a lot of them are the same now, uh, with the stipulating that, you know, we have some other materials you can. Wait, and we could probably review the downtown or relay district criteria in depth, maybe a little more to kind of address what the board wants. Uh, with the landscape and so on, but the the takeaway is, I mean, I think we're still. You still have the issue, um. Uh, people are concerned about the number of cars in the back, clearly, on that, and and, um. Uh, you know, if you wanted to do some options, is and and it's something we could, we could discuss through, you know, and 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 see. Yes, potential ways forward, because the board has been clear and been clear with me offline as well, they, they, people wanna make. The project succeed, but. They're uncomfortable with certain aspects of it, maybe we can dress them offline.
Mm-hmm.
In a way that's pragmatic for everybody.
Yeah.
Um, removing, I sent you the email with suggesting, you know, perhaps an alternative would be to park out, you know.
Yeah.
Off, I understand it, and that's why, and I and I totally respect your your predicament with your 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 fiscal constraints with that. But it is an option nonetheless, or that sort of thinking. Uh, the board has also mentioned that there's waivers, uh, that they, board has power to grant a waiver for parking. They have, um, a a bit of leeway with, uh, several other things, including, you know, landscaping improvements or. Aesthetic type things that that may. Um, impact the overall feel of of the, um. The immediate neighborhood as well, and and and, and, uh. Um, I think, um. There's, he's got a lot to go with on this, and and I would recommend, let's, let me move this along a little.
Yeah.
Um, Bill, Nims or, um.
Yeah.
Trinowski also mentioned. Um, the possibility of this being a three unit, does, does, he doesn't have to re-advertise and go through any procedures, we could.
Right.
We could continue on with these discussions if we were, if if something like that were to change, right?
Yes, the paths forward at this point, um, if if, uh.
I just wanna make sure that we're not walking into anything that we should.
No, no, if you're going the other way. If you were increasing from three to four units, it would require a re-advertising.
Okay.
Um, but but going this way, um, no, but it would, of course, it would require a modified plan for the board, but but. I think, pretty much on.
But I just wanted to make sure that we're compliant with. Hearing.
That's correct, yeah, the the options here, you know, there there's three or four options at this point, and I don't think, um. That I I don't see any, yeah.
Okay, so if there's no more board comments, I'm, I don't know about the public comments, but I wanted to ensure board members can finish the panel, but.
The only thing I was gonna say was that if we're going through special permit, uh, the ten point four and the nine point four. I do appreciate that, you know, like I said, the improvements for, um. Uh, safety, safety concerns are, you know, that's one of the special permit requirements. The neighborhood character and social structure, which we already discussed. The pervious parking area, like. There, another one is impacts on the natural environment, I realize that it's pervious, which is great, but cars will still be parked there, so it's just, I know, again, I know that. There's not gonna be a perfect. You know, solution, I guess that that's just also a concern of mine with the parking area.
Uh, Natalie, could I, uh, maybe now's a good time for I read what the conservation.
Real quick.
Yeah, okay, I I didn't mean to interrupt, I just don't want to forget that, because you're parking, uh, this is from the conservation commission. Um, and and the question I asked was, uh, do you see any parking in the rear? As a specific issue conservation wise, or just case per- against the permitting? It it conservation replied, it should be known that any requirements of the planning board to have the applicant alter the land, to have cars parked there. Will trigger conservation. This is on our, uh, online G I S, but there's a screenshot of the of the jurisdiction, which I have a a picture of. If you just have cars park on the grass, that is not an activity that is within conservation. So that would not treat, trigger the need for conservation permits. So, I think what you're saying, any improvement or adjustment or, um. Alteration of the land would be what triggered it, so in other words, it's it's depending on the specifics, you would want to keep conservation loop, which I have been anyway. But but, so I don't think that it's clear that that you would a hundred percent need them, but it's certainly not clear that you a hundred percent would not. Depending on what the final. Okay? Okay, I'm sorry about that, Natalie.
I'm gonna move this along, I'm gonna open up the public comments, um, do we have anyone online, Bill, can you, do you mind checking?
Uh, we only have town councils, Liz Light.
And that, so that's showing everyone.
Yeah, let me double check.
For public comments, if you could, if you want to. You're required just to identify yourself by name, um, and that's. And then I, we limit it to about three minutes, so please, sir.
Uh, Daniel Hey. I'm the man who currently owns the T Hillside Street, uh, senior tourist. Um, I guess my public comments are, of course, I don't want parking lot in my backyard. Uh, there's wildlife that walks through, there's geese, there's deer, you know, parking lot obviously for the after that. Uh, or ruining, I guess, um. My major concern with all of this is. Our driveways are right next to each other. Um, there was no way a paving truck. A snowplow or any apparatus, fire truck, ambulance would ever fit. If my cars are parked in my driveway, the major difference is, um, and there was some comment to that. Uh, I have three vehicles, I know exactly where the keys are at all times, if I need to move a vehicle. To get out in an emergency, guess what, I'm grabbing my wife's car, you know. And my tone, there's no. In this scenario, there would be having somebody to knock on special doors and move their vehicle if they're in that line. Um, if we, you know, don't have a parking lot in the back. Um, it just comes down to, like you mentioned. You're getting ready, rid of the beautification of a residential neighborhood. It's a beautiful backyard, you know, sure, it needs maintenance, it needs to be mowed, like trees need to be trimmed. The property, but it's still beautiful back there, you know, you can listen to the river go by, um. If we. Did not want these trucks to go onto our property, which they would have to, to get down to this proposed parking area. Then we're just not gonna allow it, I mean, it's as simple as that, and logistically, there's no way to. To do this project like that, um. It really comes down to the number of units in this place. Did not surpass the existing number of units that have already been there. That works perfectly fine, it's tight, but if you know exactly where your keys are, because you're living in the same unit. And it's no problem, but once you start adding to additional units to this building. You're gonna be interrupting people, really. There's gonna be events that are gonna be now shown or shining into the river, um, when they back up, they're gonna be shining right into our house. This is a elevated lot, it goes, it is a slope, you guys are more than welcome to come to my property and look at it, it is a slope. Those headlights coming up are gonna be shining into our back windows, they're gonna be shining into the neighbors across the street. Windows, bedroom windows, it is just a logistical nightmare. Even thinking of putting a parking lot back there. So, I I really invite you guys to come and look at this property, because that slope alone will. Be a huge hindrance to any construction, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Any public comments, this is.
Yeah, my name is Fred Brooks, I live directly across the street. And I just wanna state that I don't wanna get into a piss and match, because I feel like that's where we've been getting off to here. And, uh, I don't, you know, I have a couple commercial vehicles, I run a business out of my house. I used to always park my vehicles in my driveway until construction started, and I'd come home, someone else was parking in front of my house, so I just started doing. But, um, all I wanna say is, he mentioned, I didn't wanna bring this up, but he made a comment about last night going down the street and taking a picture. Um. A neighbor called the cops and it wasn't me, and I heard that someone thought that it was me. And the next night, my vehicle was keyed, and I notified all the neighbors, that's why. And the next night, my vehicle was keyed and I notified all the neighbors, that's why I moved out the street, so.
Um, I'm happy to continue to take public comments on the project, um, unfortunately, I, we can't.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's why the street's been kinda quiet, because the neighbors are scared.
Um.
Um, so I'll go back to the project.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, I have multiple uh, questions, uh, and like I said, I don't wanna, I'm not looking for anything to get stopped or cause a piss and mess, I just. Stating the things that concern me, um. I don't really get the one and a half spots, like, I I get that's the law, but I'm still, does anyone else have a concern about each unit having two cars these days? So I just, I can't figure out the number of cars, you know, again, it's a requirement, but that's just my personal. You know, and this, if this driveway is steep and hard to get down to, let's be honest, all these cars are gonna park on the street. It's easier to park, it's right up front of their house. Like, I wouldn't wanna pull out back into a tricky parking lot, but that's my concern. Um, and and like I said, I don't wanna. Oh, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna bash with my neighbors. I I I've been there a very long time, I've never had any incident, I just want. Everything to go smooth and and be acceptable, but I just, I have a list of complaints and. With this meeting moving private, do I have the authority to to come to these meetings?
I know, I'm not here to answer questions, so.
So the next thing that didn't get addressed that was a concern of mine from the last meeting was. So the dirt parking lot, I'd be worried about the water that rips down there, the the gravel getting washed away into the river. And then the gasoline and oil situation again, um, that's a concern of mine. And then a property of mine that I have in Maynard, um, I took down a. Piece of the, I know he's made a comment last time that nothing was changing outside. And I noticed that he's added on both sides of the house, like twelve inches, fourteen inches. And now he's took down a structure on the side of the building that was grandfathered to the property line. That's taken down now, so I don't know how you rebuild that with stairs or. I'm a little concerned with that, because what is the uh, I don't know what his measurement is from the side of the building to the property line. So that's one of my concerns. Um, the lights to the parking lot, the plowing, getting a cloud truck down there. Yeah, oh, and then I'll state one more, then we can close up, but. There's a few houses there, we allow him to go to, say, a three or four family, what's to say that? These other houses can't all go to three to four families. Now, can we talk about the parking from? So let's say he gets approved for three or four units, now those other three or four houses in a row. Do they have the rights to come board you guys and turn theirs into four families? You know, and now all that parking and, you know, that's a concern. So, but I'll, I'll close with that.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you for listening.
And the other public comments. Okay, um, what's next, Bill?
Uh, well, I would, I mean, it sounds to me like uh, it it, you know, the continuance, but. We would need. I mean. It's certainly not gonna be a two week continuance. So that, it sounds like June eleventh, there's a possibility. We could get, we got her uh, in for then or, and um. Yeah, June eleventh probably be, or uh, depending on the boards. June twenty uh, fifth, we're gonna have to reschedule, as you and I discussed, they have a shortage already of people, but move it one day or the other or something. I'll get that straight later, but, uh. Yeah.
So June eleventh is an option, of course, um. The meeting after that is June twenty fifth, but there may be some logistical issues with that. Can we? Can we even continue to a meeting that might, that we know that might have logistical concerns? We can continue to that scheduled meeting if it gets moved, that meeting gets moved by a day or two, right?
Well, if we, let's say, if we, if we reschedule, I mean, if we move to a meeting and we don't have the debating on that day.
I'm just saying, if we make a motion to continue to say a time that. I'm just asking if we can make.
Continue the meeting for a time uh, shortened. Date and time.
Right now, it is scheduled certain, but uh, the there's some logistical issues with having that meeting on that date, so that I'm aware of.
I'm like your fault.
Yeah.
That's a, the the thing is, if we, um, and then, you know, we'll have, we'll have, you talk about for the second meeting in June.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll probably have to move it one day or another, I'll have to send a a. Email out.
But we don't know that, so we can't continue. A meeting that we're not certain of.
Yeah, you can't.
I mean, it's on the books, it's scheduled, it's just, there's a chance that we might need to move.
Because then we have to open it to continue it again.
So why don't we just go to the eleventh and we have to.
If it's not ready, it's not ready.
Mr. Trinowski, um, what's your sense of, would you, would you like to continue? I always leave it up to the applicant on how they want to proceed, so the options are. Continuance, um, a closure, of course, in a vote, um, that's always an option at any time. Um, and I think those are the two options tonight, right?
The elements are practical. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd want to walk the bar or anything like that, so.
Enough money into this that we.
A continuance.
What's your sense then, con- uh, continues to June eleventh?
Yeah, so when we need to have this mission and by?
Week prior.
Okay.
Um. The, and again, that it's. You know, depending on on. Yeah, that's the best way, and for some reason, understanding that there's not a. Meeting on the twenty fifth, we know it's not gonna happen. And uh, maybe continue to another date at that point, if something's not ready and so on.
And then, uh, just as a point of clarification. Are we looking for by the week before the eleventh to have some kind of approval from COMCOM on this or?
COMCOM's not, no, COMCOM's not really part of this. What what you're gonna wanna do is, we're gonna just wanna. You, you, I would recommend that when you submit plans like you've been doing, keep them to Conservation Commission. And 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 just as easy as you say, you know, is there anything, do you need us to schedule on your, get on your schedule or not, um. You know, um, that's a safe way to do it. I mean, the worst case is you don't have to go.
Yeah.
Um, but so far as this board, um, need everything a week ahead so they can have some time to look at it, um. I would, um, maybe the thing to do would be, you know, peruse some of the stuff we discussed.
Yeah.
See what you can come up with, um, and um, and you can schedule a meeting with with. Me and if Chris is available and not, that, you know, I don't know his schedule, but but um, we can make, certainly make something. For time as.
And then just a clarification for any of the D O D requirements, uh, or special permit. Is there any additional comments that we could get out of this meeting before we move forward that we could address?
Well, I can, I I, it's up to the board, I mean, I I I'd be happy to read through them real quick and and and, uh, Bill, I'm comes in time. Yeah, all right, well, I think we can do this, look at each split. Okay, so the the downtown overlay district, just for the. Everybody understands, it's an overlay zoning district, an additional set of regulations on top of what's already there. The purpose is to encourage certain types of development with it, um, there are uh, response, a a level of responsibilities. You're getting the advantages of downtown overlay district, but you're subject to the special permit requirements, which I'll read right now. Um. The the, the proposal must constitute high quality development with regards to construction, material, architecture, design, site design. Which will enhance the downtown and the immediate neighborhood, per and provide significant benefit. Uh, to the residents of the town. When applicable, the proposed development will provide effective. Protection of the Assabit River from stormwater runoff from new impervious services being proposed. Okay, three. The proposed development will improve the functioning of downtown by at least one of the following means, so. Okay, provide a significant improvement to the usage and or number of parking. Public parking spaces in the downtown area. Second, provide a significant improvement to the effectiveness of parking space allocation of the downtown area. Three, provide a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience in downtown Maynard. And last, oh, no, I'm sorry, not last, uh. D, provide a significant improvement to the water quality of current stormwater runoff reaching the Assabit River. E, increase views and access to the Assab River. F, provide a significant improvement to the functioning of the downtown area. It only has to meet one of those. Um, and so what would be good would be to read through those and figure out, hey, here's how it does, here's a basic. And then the last one, uh, i- the last um, criteria is. The proposed development is designed in a manner that is compatible with the existing natural features of the site. And compatible with the characteristics of the surrounding area. So that is, that's. In, um, for the downtown overlay district, if you're working under that.
Uh, Bill, so my feedback then is, um, since it was requested, is, um. Item C and item D are number three and number four. Number three is the multiple criteria. Of big significant improvements to parking spaces or the pedestrian experience. Um, things of that nature, and then to understand how this is compatible with the characteristics of the surrounding area, so we just have to. Figure those parts out for, by the way to success. Um, so, June eleventh.
Yeah, okay, can I just add in one more point?
Yes.
I I'm just on the record, I wanna make sure it's clearly, there is a an illusion that, alluding to the fact that somehow I'm connected with. The facing from other people's properties, um, and I want that stricken from records, but uh, we're, we're so, um.
Uh, noted, okay, thank you, um, I'll make a motion to continue to June eleven at seven P M. Thank you, Jim, uh, all in favor of the continuance? Five zero for the continuance, thank you for coming, Jim.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor to adjourn the meeting? Please raise your hand. Five zero for for the adjournment of the.
Yes.
We got this adjourned then.
Yes, this is just adjourned.
Okay, so let's open up, um, the public hearing with, uh, item number three, the public hearing with forty two Main Street. Uh, this is an application filed by Sherwood Rivers, yeah, is that that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, Shaw Rivers, uh, Rivers needs of, um, natural, uh, healing, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, forty two Main Streets, uh, this is a, um. This is a request for special permit to per- to approve the operation of a marijuana retail establishment in the central. Business zoning district in the downtown overlay district of forty two Main Streets. Um, hi, welcome, um, would you mind just identifying yourself to the writer, then I'm going to uh, uh, give it over to the, uh, Bill Memzer, just to give. The board a primer on this.
Yeah, sure, I, um, for those, everybody, thank you all, um, you said, my name is Shaw Rivers. And so I'm excited to hopefully open a dispensary here in Maynard in the near future. Um, I live locally, so this is just an awesome opportunity to be able to have a retail location so close by. Uh, this is the architect on the project, Tom Reynolds, and to tell you more about the plan.
Yeah, um, I mean.
Um, just, you know, name and company, just name our company for now. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, Bill, do you wanna give the board a primer on this, and then we'll allow the applicant to present?
Sure, also, uh, we have, uh, it was live, uh, town council. Is where the society involved, what was just before, just if there's any questions to come up. Um, this is a special permit for a marijuana establishment in the downtown overlay district, it's permitted. Uh, by, by, um. By, uh, best permit of the planning board, uh, this particular, um, establishment. Is not going to trigger site plan review, it's it's a strictly special permit review in the downtown overlay district. There are no external. Uh, uses, I I'm sorry, no external changes proposed, um, and there is a, um. A, uh, it's a history of, uh, retail in that area. This was a live, the board granted a live work. Special permit for this project about, or this location, uh, two years ago maybe or so. Um, that was to allow a live work use in. That particular dwelling or that particular structure, it did not mandate. A live work use in there, so there was some confusion on that. I tried to make that clear in the staff report, I hope I did, um. This, uh, uh, a marijuana establishment, um, as the board's familiar with, uh, requires a renewal. It's a two year special permit. Um, it, um. It has been, uh, reviewed by town staff, um, and, uh, the one note from, uh. As of last week, anyway, I'm not sure if anything's changed, but I I think the applicant still stood with the police department with a security plan. Um, that has not been completed as of last week, I didn't check this week, but, so that would be, um. Incumbent on, uh, you know, the the applicant to take up anything that this board did, we would condition on. Uh, provision of a security plan approval by the police, uh, department and of. I'm not sure if the, um, the, uh, host community agreement with the select board. Uh, I'm not sure when it's coming back to the select board for execution, but that's a separate process, but is required. For this permit to be effective. And, um, I think, uh, I got shut off, it's so late, my timeline, um. And it's, uh, in in the downtown overlay district, so there's a downtown overlay district special permit criteria, and.
So if I summarize.
Yeah.
No site plan review required.
Correct.
Special permit for marijuana establishment.
In the downtown overlay district.
In the downtown overlay district under section nine point four, and then special permit criteria for section ten.
Correct.
Okay, does everyone get that? Some questions?
Oh, first, we invite them.
Yes, yeah, just wanna make sure we understand our rules here, that's all, okay, um, so. Um, I give a presentation.
Well, I mean, it's mostly, uh, reviewing what you guys have in terms of the, uh, the plan of the pipeline.
You want to use the, um, oh, do you want, they pull it up?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same as the.
Yeah, so why don't you pull it up?
Yeah, pull it up, so the, uh.
So I I think, you know, I kind of attempt to not, uh, give planning testimony, since I'm not a L C planner. But tell a bit of a story as to what it is that the, uh, Miss Rivers is is intending to do, and what I find really interesting with the, uh, products fixed into the neighborhood. Um. Getting to walk your downtown really has a feeling of being like a downtown thing, uh, they, even though there are still, you know, you see in the vacant store fronts and whatnot. Um, there, there is a very nice downtown neighborhood feel that you have, right? And Shaw would, uh, approach me, where we go way back, um, we actually went to the same college together, um. A- as to putting together something that can make the best use of essentially what is a small space, uh, for her dispensary. And she is very interested in. Sort of connecting with not just the, uh, the neighborhood, but also her, her, uh, part and native American roots in this, and also her love of art. So what we were trying to do is create a space, um, that meets the criteria of marijuana dispensaries. While sort of bring these other things into play here, um. You know, obviously, one of the criterias that from this street, you can't look directly in and see the products being sold, um. And we wanted to tie in a bit of that artwork through that display case that will still allow. Light to come through, because it's, you know, we don't want to essentially be a a dark hole in the wall, um. And show off some of the artwork and given, you know, a bit of that feel of that natural feelings that's we're going for. Um, so just as a, you know, talking about briefly security sort of things. Um, there's an entrance, uh, uh, vestibule that would be adding a, uh, like a pass through window so that. Someone can check IDs of the person that's there, if there's any issue, that person can essentially be locked inside of that vestibule until they can get response from. Uh, authorities, uh, we are gonna have a a safe that's gonna be inside there, we're bringing in the A D A bathroom to make sure that complies. And then the, the bulk of the space, though, we're gonna be, yeah, I don't, uh, bulk of the space we're gonna be using. Since, again, it is a small space, using the walls as part of the display, and I want, sort of, interesting, we just got a sample of one of the, uh, display cases. And these are, yeah, it's a simple shadow box, essentially, display case that allows. For either display product or display of art on the walls, like the interchange move around, um, while, so he can. Place lock on at the end of the night, this can be taken out and put into the vaults for protection, um. I think it's essentially, that is the bulk of the architectural, um, idea for this space, and. I think essentially that is the bulk of the architectural um idea for this space and. Then we're looking at the criteria from the downtown overlay. Um I think one of the the most important. Uh special criteria was the distance from a school we has uh measured out at about four hundred feet distance where three hundred is required. Um. A lot of the other conditions, I mean, again, this doesn't require the site plan approval, but. You know, we are complying with most of with everything else that was asked of us something from the. Master plans zone against the uh overlay district. Uh so I think that essentially that my belief is kind of fits in and so what I like about it. There's a couple other shops that I saw where you had these really small storefronts. Um. Made really good use of those spaces and I think this is gonna be another one that will kind of do that and let the let our run a unique. Uh dispensary here, one that's not, you know, doesn't really fit the uh the 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 box chain dispensaries that have been popping up all over the country.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I have a few questions to start. Um. The regarding the live work, are you intending to use the live work special permit, meaning to live and work in the same space?
I am open to the idea, but it's not necessary in order to to move forward, so I have to go either way with it. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be like a primary living space. You know, I I do have a house locally, so I'd be living there summarily. Um I might just like. I don't know if I'm staying late from one shift, you go opening next morning, since it is a live use zoning, I might just, you know, stay there. From closed to opening, something like that.
Um, so to summarize, there's you. You're gonna. Build the space so that it is gonna be potentially used for the work?
I would like to retain that that um that ability to use it for both, uh as long as that's approved as such.
Um. What is?
Application shows.
Um, so let's. Can you elaborate?
This bracket here shows that the live space is not in in a contract for the. Inside those?
Well, then she has the entirety of the space currently. Um she has a family member that's living in there. Um and the original tank was to. Co- under without knowing that there was a a previous approval for live work. That this would be a separate item, we could easily. Open that up for a live work situation. Um I mean essentially it would just be adding a lock door.
I'm I'm. Trying to figure out what the asking is.
Correct.
Live work, it could just be a apartment and a business.
Right.
Stuff for it, not nothing to do with common ownership or anything.
Uh but I I don't think it really impacts. The special permit for the marijuana establishment and we're just trying to understand on record what's what the intentions and what the plans are. Um. It it doesn't, it doesn't really change. How I'm gonna view the special parent degree itself, so. Um then, but we just, we need congruency with with what's. Being provided.
Well, I think, yeah.
Just needs to kind of line up, so.
I I think because uh she does have the the use of the whole space that will continue to live work um back to get a permit.
Does that mean that the space itself needs to be part of the application? And that that what that's what I don't know. Because I want to make sure. Yeah. So I I just want to make sure that when we get to a decision that it's defensible. Right, so we just, Bill, we might just need to ensure that. The plans, if if live work is going to. Potentially be part of it. And then here's here's the concern is that this design drawing shows that the the live space is not part of the application. But maybe it should be so that we don't need to come back to planning board later on or anything like that.
I think that's possible, but let's, we've got, you know, Liz here, let's see, yeah.
And then I don't know, having a physical wall. To definition of live work, I don't know, because why have to be? If the business has to be secure, so nobody can actually go in there.
That that's right, and then when does it become? I mean, if we were going the other way around. And we were saying, all right, we we want to have a live work in this particular instance. I remember when we were considering this. The whole idea was there was a a. Connectivity, you know, it just i- it because we were concerned about, you know, we want to, you know, certain use in front and people could be there in the back and come and go. In this case. Um, once I guess, I mean, I've never done this, th- this is a person, but I would think that if you separated. The live from the work, just reverse to mixed use, the special permit is just to allow that. Space to have a live work.
Right. I just want to make sure that whatever. I just want to make sure that the applicant is set up for success here.
Yeah.
Right, so so Liz, I just want to make sure that the applicant is set up for success. Re- whatever situation applies, whether the live work permit is being used or not. Um can you help us gain, I know this is a very nuanced question, can you help us gain some clarity? On how to make sure the application is um. Compliant, I think is the best way to put it.
Well, I mean, it really depends on what they're applying for specifically, if they're applying for a wit live workspace. Um that's what can be approved if they already have a special permit for a live workspace.
That's what it is.
I mean.
So the owner of the property has a special permit for the live workspace and this will be a tenant rent.
But this is a new special permit, correct?
For the marijuana use establishment.
Right. So. I think if this is. I mean. This would supersede that unless. I mean, they both exist, so if this was denied, that would still remain. If this was approved, then you have two special permits on the same property. I think the question here is. Do you want to eliminate that first special permit here? Do you want to incorporate it herein? Um. Both permissions can exist. It really depends on what he's applying for, what what she's applying for. Um. If you don't want the live workspace, I mean, they don't. It if that's not included as part of the application, then that's not what we're approving. Today. Um. And you can also. Put restrictions on this. Um application to say that 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 can no longer exist if this does. So it's really at the board's discretion what you want to do and and also what they applied for.
And is it fair to say that it's best to pick a lane so that the decision and the special permit is is most defensible way to run down the road?
Yeah, I I think you need to make it clear in in the decision whether or not you want to allow for that to occur simultaneously with this use.
Okay. Hold on, Dan, any clarity on this?
Oh. If this would just drag in the business space for. Cannabis use. Is the D O D permitting criteria apply or is it just a punch up special?
Did you follow that, Bill?
I I didn't understand the question though, but I mean, if it, so in other words, if it was.
They're just taking an existing.
Commercial.
Commercial space.
Right.
Putting cannabis in it.
Right.
Is there a D O D permit or is it just a cannabis plant?
It's just a use of D O D special permit because remember, we we added that, that a use. Is automatically, because remember, we did, if it was a use. That triggers. The D O D.
So that, alright.
So, yeah.
So the D O D and the cannabis would apply whether it the uh living space is part of it or not.
That's right, because we 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 we. This board, we 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 discussed that a a while back, we did put it in. We've used that as criteria for. Um determining what the special permit criteria should would apply.
And. And if. These were determined to be separate uses either by choice or by legal definition.
Right.
Would the apartment, standalone apartment need permitting?
No. I mean, it would be built, not not from us.
Right, it would be building.
Right, right.
Building diverse.
Yes.
If it needs any more than what's.
That's right, exactly, right.
Okay.
It wouldn't come before us if it if they just came and it, you know, they just wanted to need one apartment. There are actually two apartments, it wouldn't come before us. It was who came first because it was the live work.
So. Wouldn't that seem like the simplest path is just. A business only?
I would. I would like to separate them.
Okay, that's so basically I've presented it.
Yes.
Yeah, fine.
Um, because I have no problem with them being next to each other, so I. I feel like it's gonna lead to more trouble if there's any.
Well, yeah, there's a change of tanks in the one one or the other.
Right, uh I just feel like it's going to um be more difficult. Moving forward if they're thought of as connected. I feel like it.
Who wants to keep them separated and presented as uh submitted?
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it Liz, Liz, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I thi- I think that makes the most sense because this really isn't a live workspace anymore. I think that's separately defined and. This decision, just like that one, will be recorded on the property. And so if that's not how they're applying, if they're applying for. Just the marijuana establishment, I think it makes sense to only deal with the marijuana establishment. And you can place a restriction that, you know, this is only to be used for that purpose.
Okay, fine.
Maybe you'll help me craft that list.
Um. We may just want to make sure that the. The the language that was submitted just aligns with that, that's all.
The language, yeah, um.
So it's part of the application.
Yeah, we may want to revise it. Oh, no, this is since the property, the property is a mixed-use building.
Right, it's already allowed to have a business on the first floor and then an apartment on the second floor, so. They don't really need further approval.
Uh to be fully clear, I didn't read through the full statement, I just want to make sure that it's aligned, that's all.
It it the only thing is, Liz, is it necessary thing, uh uh. On the actual application, they do. Uh mention um. Intend to utilize the back premises for a living area and the front area for Rivers. Uh leaves of natural healing, so maybe we should. Or can we just write that in the decision that it was, or you think we're refer to have a amended application? For the board, does it?
I think with the consent of the applicant, if that's how you want to proceed. Then you can amend the application without and waive the fees for that, obviously.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so this would then, would would the previous permit still exist or would?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have the living space in the back. And a store in the front. It's just a matter of.
That that's, as I understand it from this board, um the. The special permit to allow live work that Mr. Whiting got a couple of years earlier, that's still there. What's, well, but it is not in in the special permit for this. Venture, it would not. One of the conditions the board would place on it would be that it was not to be used for as a live work. Not saying you can't use the back room for what you're gonna use it for, but they're granting an application. For a marijuana establishment in this portion as presented on the, as on the plan, I think you said this is the permit, yeah. So so. What we would not, what you would not want to happen would be all of a sudden, you know, it was a change and it was a living. You know, it became a live work again while this board's permit was.
I see.
Active, makes sense?
So as long as it's a dispensary, it would no longer also have a living area in the back. But were the dispensary for some reason to not exist at any point in the future, it would revert back to the original mid use permit?
It would be, yeah, yeah, well, live work, it could be used for that again.
I just think it's separate. Yeah, no, I think it's a little different than that.
So if. The if the dispensary opened and was not. And and was. Closed for whatever reason.
Well, there's a nuance there, right? So um if you abandon the prior use, there's a grandfathering issue here too. So if you abandon the prior use, I'm sa- what I was saying, just to clarify, if this is denied. Then that permit, special permit still exists and you can do a a live workspace. If this is granted. And. Under the condition that it's no longer a live workspace, it's it's simply a uh marijuana dispensary. Then that prior use will be. Um likely abandoned. And no longer grandfathered. So it wouldn't revert back, it's only if it's denied, it it stays in place. I'm sorry for the confusion on that.
I think I made a confusion.
Was it possible at all to retain the use?
What is how you applied? So, I mean, and it would be a mixed-use building, correct? That's the existing underlying zoning?
Right, I'm just wondering if the dividing wall were built as it is in the plans, then. The spaces would be completely separate, the word the retail as the living space, and I'm just wondering with then. Is is there a way to retain it with that living space or are we saying to just take all that living space and? Put it into the store?
So, Bill. Because I understand that that living space can just happen tomorrow, it doesn't need any building.
That's correct.
So the living space is the living space and has nothing to do with this table here.
Right.
And you can rent both the residential portion and the commercial portion from the.
I think what she's saying, both both uses can exist, they just, we don't want that interconnection through.
Yes, okay, it's, I mean, you can still rent the residence and live there or whatever. And you can rent a commercial space and put in your, if you get approved, put in your shop.
Okay.
Um, just calling it a live workspace, the state definition that I read. Implies a. I keep wanting to word, use the word synergy and that's the right connection between the live space and the workspace. And despite the fact that. The Cannabis Control Commission and Town Council has said that that would be legal for a dispensary. I think that there will be problems that arise, you know, in terms of.
Um potential problems, we don't know.
No, yes, but you know, um.
I don't know what it could be, but it's just, it's kind of unknown to it.
Okay.
Um but, so if I get this, Liz, we could issue a special permit. For the marijuana dispensary portion of of the space. The other space could just simply be lived in because it's already allowed to be lived in. And then that's it, we're just focusing on the special permit for the marijuana site.
Correct, it just wouldn't be a live workspace, it would be a separate living quarters. Partitioned, sectioned off.
And this is a board element, so.
And and Liz, if if um. Were down the line, the owner wanted to. Utilize the space again as a live work, would it require a new special permit then for live work?
Likely yes, depending on how much time has passed and whether the use commenced.
Okay.
That's my lawyerly answer.
Alright, which which means it's unknown, um okay.
Well, 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 we'll craft this well.
Um does that make, I know that's a lot, does that make sense?
I I think so, yes, I appreciate you taking the time to clarify, I think it does really make a lot more sense now, thank you.
Um, I, I'll ask the question, but I have to sense it, but I'll ask the question, would you like to proceed under the. Premise that the marijuana establishment space will be a sole use permit for that space only and that's the only thing being applied for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um so I'll, so that all being said.
I'm sorry, I just want to consider the application would be amended with that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that all being covered, thank you everyone for your patience. Um do you, what is the status of your um security plan with the Maynard Police Department?
I have not reviewed the files of the Maynard Police Department yet, as my understanding is that. Your probably contingent on their approval of. The security plan, depending on where.
There is always an option to condition a special permit that that says um. The police department will have to approve. Um, there's always a risk though that they ask for something that would then require you to come back, so there's. That essential risk, right, which means that you'd have to come back, we'd have to. Uh what would we have to do if?
Yeah, what what Chris is, Chris is saying is if there was something that triggered. I can't think of anything offhand, but you know, um if something. Triggered a trip back to see this board, it would be a new petition. I can't think of anything offhand, but that doesn't mean it, it couldn't happen. But if that is the risk that.
I think it's a condition we're fine with and we'll, you know, if we need to come back, we'll. Based on whatever.
My inclination would be, uh, and what's typical of this board, would be. Uh, if the board did choose to approve this, they would put conditions in. You know, the, which is really, uh, it, it's not our purview so to speak, but we would just say condition upon approvals from. And, uh, the host community agreement, you haven't signed that yet, right?
No.
Okay, so.
Yes, the last board meeting last week and they voted to reject, we had it done, finalized in terms.
So, so, so for clarity, I think the vote was, um, to allow the host community to begin negotiations, right? Did I get that correct?
Yes.
So we just, we just continue, yeah, everything like that, but you know, planning boards, if they, like I said, whatever their decision is. Um, then we would just, uh, condition what, okay, yeah, so, let's, um, let's move on, um.
Any, any questions or comments from the board regarding the special permit criteria for this project?
Very what they are.
Um, well, I wanna move on to the subject matter now, about the special permit. Any comments or questions?
I have a question on. Nine, four, six.
Can we, can we table that for a second?
Yeah, in the mind.
Um, I had a question on, um, the criteria for traffic and safety. Do you have a sense of what the sort of logistics of that deliveries and, um. Uh, employee parking and things like that might be regarding what's on site?
Um, well, there is the parking streets that are working in the past, we can utilize for deliveries. And could often use, uh, for as employee parking. Um, there's also the, uh, municipal parking lot across the street. Which avails for parking as well as the, the street itself that has a meter parking.
Um, and I'm not gonna get into too much in business plan, but do you have a sense of just how many employees at this point that might be, um, on a ship?
I would, I would guess probably about three.
If we. Ask you to have employees park in one of the municipal parking lots instead of on the street itself, would that be amenable?
Yes, certainly, I, I can certainly have all employees park in municipal lot instead of on a street.
There's the, I don't know how familiar I was with those, there's the parking lot on River Street.
Right.
Which it has good lighting and has, you know, it's been updated and I think it's a good, good, good condition, I think that's close by.
Yes, certainly.
Um, I just wanna try to get cars off of the main street for customers.
Right, of course.
Okay. Um, do, do you expect deliveries, I, I presume you expect deliveries in the back?
Yes.
And this will have to be laid out on the security plan, of course.
Right, of course.
Um. And I imagine, um, the, the, the waste would need to also come out of the back in some sense, right?
Yes.
Um, but as I noted, I think there's only one front door.
Correct.
Right.
So deliveries can park in the back, but they're gonna have to. Come around the front to the public sidewalk, right? And I'm not suggesting that's an issue, I'm just trying to.
That's correct.
Until those are the type of things that are gonna be in the security plan as well.
Okay.
I have a question, um, if I manage to chat for the board, um. So when I, the app, the application details out the special permit criteria for ten point. Um, and, and it's in a permanent application, so, social economic, I mean, needs, traffic and flow, adequacy of utilities. I, I generally see that these are all sort of best, so I don't have much questions about. Ten point four, um, if other, I just wanna control this conversation a little bit, do other members have. Questions about special thing, term of pressure for ten point four?
Um. Just look. To do things and make sure. The fire chief weighs in?
The fire chief said no comment. Right.
You know, the single door thing?
Yeah.
And no back, no second access.
Yeah, that, um, so the code. Has, uh, conditioned based on these square footage of the act, and the occupancy number that allows for a single meaning.
Okay. What if it's square footage, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, it's rather small, about three hundred.
Okay.
Uh, so the determine to get into the, uh, to need to be. Uh, occupancy of fifteen over or travel distance of a hundred fifty feet or more.
Um, other questions or comments on, on the ten point four criteria? No?
I have one with the board, Chris, just for that, if I were guarding the parking, I'm, I'm, um, wondering if the board. Should, uh, th- there's one parking space in the back or two?
One.
Maybe that should be until we, um. Those security plans in anyway, that should maybe consider that reserved for delivery or so, I'm concerned about the delivery. And not having a spot there until we.
I think the condition the chair mentioned about having employees literally parking in the.
Yes, right, I was talking about.
Purely reserved for deliveries.
Purely reserved. Oh, I'm asking, I'm not, that's the board's, I just, that's my only concern is I, I, and I think the police chief would probably.
They're kind of required.
Yeah, I think that's what they're gonna come to that, so I would.
That would be my guess as well, that that's gonna probably be required by the police department, I don't think.
Based on the other ones that we've had, you know, where they didn't want like somebody parking and coming across.
Right. I don't think they want public parking on the main street would be my guess.
Okay.
So, I hope you get ahead of that.
So Phil, when you researched that. I noticed that the special permit for live work. You mentioned there were two side-by-side parking spaces. So. But these parking spaces are kind of tandem spaces, so.
Hmm.
You might need a little investigation, uh, understanding exactly where they're parking.
Okay. Um, then the security plan might need to call up the exact parking spot. I don't recall, but that's possible. Yeah, I won't, yeah, so, better to get ahead of that. Um, any, any other questions on the, the ten point four criteria? And then we'll move on to the downtown Old Lake District special parent criteria now?
Yeah.
Nine, ten, one, one, six. Yep. Um, any questions or comments, and I think Phil, you had one that is, you know, addressing that.
Um, yes, yeah, so it's always the. Okay, with the D O D special apartment is how we need subsection C. Enhancing the parking, you know, the pedestrian experience in. I suppose. A condition of a moving art space in the window helps towards the pedestrian experience, but.
Like, elaborate more on, would I guess elaborate more? And how it could, or how it does meet that.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, right now that space is a residential unit on the ground floor, which. First, it doesn't, that doesn't really need the, uh, the, the. Um, continued continuity of the uses that are on that, on that street, right, like. You've got restaurants, you've got offices, you've got, uh, storefronts, primarily storefronts. Um, you've got the art, uh, store around the block, you've got the theater. Um, a residential use on the ground floor is not sort of in character with what this, what I believe this neighborhood is.
Well, you can just stop in there for a second, it's like, why didn't I say it that way when I was talking about the live work apartment?
And so, and, and the, the thing that becomes interesting is because it's a residential unit. There are times when the, uh, kids are home, that, that front curtain is just closed, which I think is completely antipatrical to what. A commercial district, a downtown commercial district really is, right? But even in the marijuana use where we have art in the window, it's not a closed window. Um, you have art that's being displayed, you have something that the passerby can engage and experience with, and you see it similar. Uh, there's a shop across the street where they, uh, I don't remember what they sold, but I stopped just to look at. The different pieces of art that they had in the window, because it was something that drew your eye to it, especially much more than looking at someone's living room, right? Um, so I believe that this does enhance the, uh, the, the criteria of the D O D overlay. In terms of enhancing the pedestrian experience on the street.
Um, Phil Namsor, did you capture that? I think that's, um, I think that helps to address, um. Uh, provide a significant improvement to the pedestrian experience in downtown, I would just like that entered into the decision. What else?
Um, slightly related to that is. Lighting and illumination of that, I mean, should that be a twenty-four hour thing or business hour thing?
I think it's a business hour thing is, which is I believe what's currently, uh, there's the two goosenecks for each of the tenant signs, uh. The Thai chili and what will be, hopefully be Rivers, uh. Uh, leaves of natural healing, um, and we can have that put on timer that sort of shuts off that. End of the business day. Or the end of the shop today. I'm sorry.
When is the business day?
We have to split the hours to be ten to eight.
Is that in line with previous decision?
Yes, um. Rise is eight to ten. Uh, Masswell Spring is. Ten to ten. And Sugarloaf. Uh, is not specified.
Do we need to list the business hours in the decision?
If it's the boards, only if it's the boards.
We can default to town.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no, the, the, also, the, 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 um. Select board also could may want to add, but there's no, that's what we decided with Sugarloaf. Was we, yeah. Just a, oh. Personal comment on the lighting is I tend to favor as much lighting there as long as possible.
Yeah.
To illuminate and activate the, the street.
Okay, um, so. What is the lighting order skip till, do you guys have, I'm trying, do you guys have a lighting order still when they can stay on till?
No, um, but we, we ba- basically are on. What do we do with the condo? It's what? What do we do with the condo? We had the downcast sconces.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it's the.
The timeline.
The title.
We never specified.
I, I mean.
I, I think that, that we, one thing that this board has, I think. They're trying, the, the point that they're trying to make is that, uh, it's, as we've brought in new, um. This is on a long, um, main street in that area, just getting on with, uh, the thing on the. Pedestrian experience, I think that is.
Do you think that the security, the police board won't see anything about lighting?
They met.
I don't remember.
They, they did, and, and some areas they were, um, you know, probably in the back, it's possible, there could be. I don't know exactly.
Okay, well, thanks.
Um, the image is shown on regarding lighting, the image is shown on the drawing set. It looks like they show you lights interior, leave on the, the display window.
All right.
Well, so right now we're showing the potential, uh, so our potential of using, um, a, something along the lines of a, like, oh, a wall washer or. Move all sky, where we can direct the lights, almost like any sort of art, they were to direct the light towards specific pieces to really highlight them. Um. But I think that's the, the intent there, the sort of what's. Be the primary lighting for the building that spills onto the sidewalk is the, the goose necks, um, that are existing currently.
What else?
Last, last one. Just. I'm sorry. I said, uh, I mean artwork, I mean, is it clarified, this is gonna be artwork, then you.
That we're using as our screening between the, uh, the products and the, uh, this, this sidewalk.
It, it, and, um.
And this is part of the pedestrian experience.
Right, right, I mean, that's, right, so should, um, these. Special permits, uh, that we've done in the past, we also had, if the board does grant. Um, we've had a, a condition to check back in first year, just at a, not even at a post, I mean, not at a, uh. Hearing, but we asked that you come back and, or just a regularly posted meeting. A year from the date of opening, just to kind of check if there's anything that was unanticipated, and we've had. So far, we haven't had any problems, but, um.
It does become useful for gathering, so you can make a better ordinance around it too.
Yeah, well, yeah, yes, yes, so. Um, so that was something that we had done in the past, too.
Yep, it's six months after opening, it's. We were, and, you know, it requires every two years.
Well, two years, yeah, that we can only issue a permit for two years, yeah, we can only do that, right, that's the law.
Um, does that, I understand that, every two years that's renewal process? Um, so. We could close the hearing, Bill? It's really up to the applicant, so we could. Close the hearing and take, take a vote with conditions, or we can continue, the continuance may be helpful. Um, to at least get the initial phase of the, um. Security plan started, um, so that at least you have some certainty before we close. Cause once we close, we can't open again.
Right, well, I, I think. Um, approval with conditions is sort of what we're aiming for, um, should the. And I think one of the conditions, like you mentioned, was the police security plan, and if that requires us to come back, I mean, I think that gives you the leeway to. Then here as based on. You know, and one of these towns agencies. Adding a requirement that was not.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Alright.
If, oh, I.
We close the hearing and then the police say they don't like.
Yeah, you have to put in another window.
No, that's, that, yeah, that, I, I, we could, if they continued it, they, they could continue it. And then, am I right, I think Liz, they could continue it and, um. Then you can come back with the changes at the police department that proposed or whoever, you know. And that could, would be a same hearing, but if, if, if the board closed it, we'd have to start over, very opposed it.
I think. Where there hasn't been an HCA granted yet, it, it, it may be wise to continue it also.
Okay. Maybe if we could, if we could tidy everything up with this board's concerns, and we just say, you know, come.
I mean, if I understand the concerns, I mean, primarily the security plan. Um, I specifically identifying a, how that delivery spot would work, um. I mean, like, do you want us to show something or have something more clearly as to the. I mean, I think it would be part of the security plan, how that delivery works, um.
I, and I would take away the word concerned, I haven't had, I haven't heard many, many concerns at all, actually, um, I would just say. That, um, to make, make decisions of a very, um. Um, I don't even know what the word is, to have a very good decision, it's helpful to have. Uh, these things laid out so that we know exactly what we're voting on.
Okay.
Um, so that would be my advice, but I always allow the applicant to, to determine their path. My, generally, not just for this hearing, but my general advice, since there's a few things pending, would just be to. Get them started, to then, to ensure that we don't run the risk. Of having to, to open up a whole new hearing.
Okay.
Um, but that's my advice.
I would also like to consider Bill's thoughts on wording up a condition about the art.
Right, sure, cause it has to be in there, but I'm not exactly sure.
I, I agree, since that is the pedestrian. I I agree, since that is the pedestrian improvement, which makes sense, because I mean, it is a small storefront, I I'm, you know, it's something. You know, talking about the art that will be maintained or.
I mean, uh, Charles actually started often speaking to specific artists as well, um, if you're interested in hearing.
Um.
Always, um.
Personally, yeah.
It just has to make sure that the condition is written thoughtfully, that's all.
Oh, perhaps, perhaps. This is, I I wasn't suggesting there was gonna be a problem with border, was, I just suggested that we could tidy up everything we needed to tidy up tonight. And make it, so, um, if the board, like. If if you've already considered some art or potential art, um. You know, and we and we could. Use that as a, you know, um, in the condition for like, this is, you know, something. Well, Jesse wondered if you do that, the board felt that was appropriate.
I just throw something in there.
Yes, and.
Um. Then the entrance. I'm not sure which door your customers are gonna walk into, is that a buzzer? This my hand, yeah, buzzer, that you would have to welcome them in, like, anybody out the street, like, just walk in.
Into the vestibule, you will be able to, but then they'll have to.
They're buzzing.
Yes, they buzzed in, that's why we're adding the uh, security password window. Um, so they could check I D's, and then, like I said, worst case scenario, that person is then able to be. Uh, sort of held there until enforced, well, fourth, they can.
Okay.
Um. Do what they have to do.
In importance with the cannabis condition.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Just to, oh, sorry. No, my art is, just to clarify, I was looking at the actual construction plan. Where is this cut through to into the best you'll be able to?
Uh, to the right, uh, I'm sorry, uh.
One of the channels can see that.
Uh, yeah. Uh, but essentially to the side of the door, opposite the display case side, um.
Right now, it looks like the display case kind of takes up that hole.
So there's currently a um. Uh, new wall, there, we're just sort of building that, or taking that up from there.
Okay.
Um, that's. Where it is.
Again, this will probably be part of the security.
Yeah.
Thing. Um, but just in terms of like. Showing where it is, or at least be knowing where it is.
I hope not, just.
That would be good.
So going back to the art, so it's the intention to have a large canvas mural, um, that's gonna take off upon display when you. And I, as a new connect different artists, um, who are members of the North American Museum Center of Boston. And so I've been working with a couple of different people there to talk about different ideas. For this mural, so I'm envisioning it being like a really bright, vibrant colored, um, little bit abstract mural. It's playing into this Native American art, because these are all Native American artists. Um, so it's gonna be like a very colorful landscape. Um, I like a nature scene with some animals or trees and things like this, and then there's gonna be. Different art pieces throughout the store that will both serve to decorate the store as well as be available for sale.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Um, so I think my top line message is that, um. Um, I didn't hear many concerns being brought up tonight at all about uh, requirements of a special permit. And that it's better to simply um, write out this decision, so that it's clear what the decision is. Um, if anyone, you know, I'm ha- happy to take any further comments on what I just said, but that's what I heard tonight.
Yep.
Um, Liz, you have any final thoughts?
No, I I think, um, yeah, my recommendation is just to make sure that. Any new information that's gonna be presented. Is presented in a public hearing, and so that would, that was my recommendation for continuing versus closing the hearing tonight.
Um, thank you. Um. We'll wait for Bill's back, so I'm going to open up. For public comment, but I don't see any members of the public available for public comment, it's a. At this point, it's a technicality, um, I don't see anyone online either. Um, so public comment was opened, for the record, there is no members of the public to provide public comment. And I will now close public comment. Um, do you have, so. We have, um, I, uh, a meeting. A meeting schedule is. Um, May twenty eighth is two weeks from now. Um, so that's the next meeting, the one out of that would be nine, June eleventh. Um, I. Believe you're not local.
Yeah.
Okay, you are, um. You were any other representative, Ken, John, Mason?
Okay.
This is not required to be in the. If it helps.
Yes.
Um, do you have a preference on those two meeting dates, either the twenty third of May or June eleventh?
You know, I I wanna go with the the twenty eighth, um, and then it needed based on, if we get the security plan settled, maybe from there.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't wanna miss an opportunity to, you know, button this up.
I think that's fair, um, I'm happy to continue to, uh, May twenty eighth, unless there's objections. Um, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until May twenty eighth at seven P M.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim, all in favor for the continuance, please raise your hand. That's five zero for the continuance for the record. Um, thank you for, um, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'll make a more probably current. In here, you can go.
Thank you, I second that, all in favor could we adjourn it until the continuing hearing, please leave me out, five zero to adjourn, pretending. Thank you, clear done. Work it out. Um, Liz, thank you.
Let's all leave.
Take care.
Good night.
There he is. Bill, the motions we made in your absence are gonna be impressed about. They involve a lot of work on your part.
Okay.
You're gonna have to bring them to the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, pizza, that's a very good, so they need a preliminary draft of the security plans of M D D.
Okay, alright, sounds good, thank you, thanks, everybody.
Um, what are our updates? Oh, no, it's.
Yeah, Justin said.
Yeah, we're gonna, sorry, we're gonna turn items on in a minute minutes. And then we'll go to your point of office.
Oh, yeah, and you'll fill me in on what just.
We just continue to until May twenty eighth.
Oh, May twenty.
If we need to continue to get rid of all.
Okay. Uh, we have, okay, uh. Where our fit is, we have town meeting, of course, as you know.
Come on, you come on, we gotta do minutes first.
Oh, I think you said, okay, fine.
That's awesome.
And getting mixed messages in office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, John, you.
Thanks, have you been enjoying tonight?
Yeah. Power. Uh, very illuminating, but now I'm gonna go home, if you don't mind. To get yelled at on the way.
Good for him, yes.
What is that?
Good for him.
Yeah. Thank you.
Cheers.
I don't see any.
Well, thanks for your, Bill, some, your comment, I've made those a little good, thank you. Any comments on the meeting minutes from February twenty seventh? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February twenty seventh to two thousand and twenty four. All in favor for approval of meeting minutes, please raise your hand. Five zero to approve the meeting minutes from February twenty seventh. Bill, point of updates.
Point of update, um, for, um. Town meeting and Monday, um. We could, uh, if. Let's see, I'm trying to think how he did, uh. They did, they even put us on a table, so I'll only grab a table gun up there, it would just probably be scattered about as we were, but it might be good that it is sit together in a general area. Just and Chris.
This is the only guy who matters, right?
Oh, I'm not showing up, I didn't tell you that, you have to.
Oh, yeah.
Suit, right, fly.
That's right. Natalie, you pinch hand, you pinch hand?
No.
No, we've been working on, um. Your chair has been working diligently on a very nice presentation with some, probably one of our. More complex. Um. Warrants that we've had a long time, and I I really, I I'm very impressed on that. The work's gone into it, and I hope everything goes well, this is a, I think we'll all be glad that this M B T A community's since done.
Um, so propose for your, I saw a lot of your A D U slides and your purpose now.
So, yeah.
Next.
And.
And I did not give you credit, I'm still full credit.
This is your credit, this is all the credit.
If there was an A D U question, or maybe, maybe. It may be useful to point out that that, you know, we, that we had a a subcommit or a subgroup working on this. Yeah, but you, there's a lot of work went into this, this A D U.
We're not gonna name any names though.
I wouldn't worry about it. Between roosters and guns.
No.
Andy is just gonna slide right.
I hope so. Roosters, yeah, well, roosters are in forests, right?
Yes, they are, and there's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of discussion.
But that is, seriously, though, could I call on you, Bill?
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause I know, I mean, if I need clarity on an item.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause.
As a subcommittee member?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this is.
Oh, good.
And the other thing, uh, did we put in that slide for the uh, A D Us that that we worked on both of these, uh, the the firearms and the. A D U with the zoning board, I can't remember if we put it in the slide.
No, I don't give them any credit. But I will now.
Yeah. The more people, and that we, you know, the rotten gun club and the 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 police. That's a, this is a pretty good war, I'll tell you what, we did. The sports.
You gotta hold their attention.
Ten forty five.
Okay.
You gotta compete with the livestock.
Oh.
The the chicken article.
Has there been any discussion about, it doesn't matter, we don't need to talk about it, about the second night, no.
Yeah, there is no discussion about it.
Okay.
That's not gonna happen.
I I don't. Has there ever been a second night?
I don't know, but I think sometimes there should be, when it's like eleven thirty.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay, um, what else? Um, you have a letter from the.
Yeah.
G P W, yes.
I I ordered it to the board too, but I don't have a chance to look at it. Do you, do you have it there, Chris? Is it just me? Yeah, I only.
You know, listen, your contact or interest with us.
What's that?
Oh, so, um, this is, and Bill's not asking for signature, um, G P W is just, um, they're, they're. They're asking for us to just provide a letter of support for um, for a funding source, a grant that they wanna pursue, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
They're pursuing, to to be specific. Um, G P W is pursuing a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for non-point source pollution grant application funds. And this is to complete activities necessary to develop a stormwater enterprise fund and stormwater utility fee. To develop a nine element watershed base plan. For the segment of the asset river that comes to town, essentially, this is to improve stormwater conditions in town, and the forest stuff, things of that.
I love that touch.
Um, and I'm happy to draft a letter if this board, um, is willing to support.
Just to have this more of a letter from us to improve his application?
That's it.
Okay.
He just asked for a letter that that that.
He gave, I think, yeah, there's a template there for a letter.
Yeah, I didn't say the template.
Yeah.
He's just asking for us to say that we support them submitting.
Great, let's do it. I'll make a motion that we.
That the, that the chair can provide.
That the chair provides a letter of support from any board. To support Justin's.
The D P W directors.
The D P W directors.
Would you like a motion to that?
Hang on, application, the non-point source pop pollution grant application.
That was a motion.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm all in favor of the motion to for supportive letter, please review. Four zero, four one?
Um, refusing.
Okay, so, four zero, um, actually, do we have a fifth?
No.
Sure.
Five. Five zero, support.
I'll recuse myself as a former employee. J's. B J's.
Um, still. Point of update, anything else?
Uh, uh. No. No, it's not. I I, you you, I thought, um. The town meeting stopped me, Ben, those, uh, no, just town meeting. We come there, we'll be. That's all I got, that's enough. That's enough.
All right, um. Jim, would you like to do the honors?
I'd be happy, uh, Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to close the meeting?
Thanks, Jim, I'll second that, all in favor to close the meeting, please raise your hand. Five zero to close the meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
For the meeting.
Yeah.